Okay, ladies and gentlemen, let me call this meeting to order. This is the August meeting for the Valdosta County Zoning Board of Appeals. For the visitors in the audience, all the applicants or whatever, would you please sign in on the back table if you have not already signed in for our record? The way we operate, I will call each case by case number and case name. We will have a staff member come to the lectern, give us the basis of the request. The board will then have probably discussions and/or questions. Once we have heard that case from the staff standpoint, I will ask if there are any persons here, applicant or otherwise, that would like to speak on behalf of the case, please come to the lectern, give us your name and address for the record, give us the information you wish for us to take under advisement. Once you have given us the information you feel like we need, or that you would like us to take under advisement, then I will ask if there are any persons here in opposition, or if any persons here have any questions. If there are these people here in opposition or have questions, please come to the lectern, give us your name and address for the record, give us the information you wish for us to take under advisement. Normally, we will act on cases here today, however it is in our bylaws, if we feel like information is lacking, or if applicants request a postponement, we can postpone action until the next regularly scheduled meeting. Okay, the first case that we've got on the agenda is Lous County VAR 2014-08. Lous County Board of Commissioners for sixty-three twenty-eight Lake Malafahaw Boulevard in Nathan. This case, we have information that Lous County has asked that we postpone action. The county is still working out details. If you are here for that case, we will not be hearing anything on that case today. We will be hearing it next month in September, and it will be the second Tuesday in September, not the first because of the Labor Day holiday weekend.
I have two questions, Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
They ask for sixty acres?
That is for, that is juvenile, so essentially been equivalent to the September meeting.
Okay. And do we need to have a motion to tip?
I'm headed there. I need a motion to accept the request from Lous County to postpone that case until September meeting. I have a motion from Mr. McCall, I have a second from Mr. Alvarado. All in favor, please raise a hand. Unanimous, thank you. Next case we'll call will be Lous County Case VAR 2014-09, Rick Wagner for twenty-nine sixty-nine Swamp Edge Road, Valdosta. Ms. Bradley, you have the floor.
Good afternoon. My first case before you today is a variance by Mr. Rick Wagner. He's requesting a variance to our lot frontage requirement. As you can see on the presentation, Mr. Wagner has about sixty-some acres that is on R.A. residential agriculture. He desires to sell the property, and the buyer just wants assurance that they can pull a permit to build or place a manufactured home on the property. At this time, no permits can be issued to that property because there is no recorded survey plaque. And the reason, you know, it can't be recorded because there is no frontage on a county maintained road. The property will be accessed from Mud Swamp Road, which is a private road. Both Mud Swamp, Swamp Edge are all private roads, and the only way you can, you know, have, you know, frontage is through the variance process. The applicant doesn't intend to subdivide the property any further. If they do decide to subdivide the property any further, they have to come back through this process. Staff looked at this and saw, you know, there was no creation of any new lots. We will be concerned if they did decide to come and subdivide more lots from that property, but at this time, with the lot being as it is, we didn't see any problem with them accessing the property. I did try to get a photo of the current access. The top is the intersection of Indian Ford Road and Mud Swamp, which is a private road. And the bottom photo is the actual driveway they're going to use to get to that sixty acres. Staff looked at this, offered a recommendation of approval, but no conditions.
Do they need a recorded agreement to use that driveway?
The easement will be shown on that survey. That's to be shown. There's, I tried to give a historical view of that property. There's a survey in there that shows that, it shows it as a private road, and that will be carried on into that new survey. So that the buyer, and both Mr. Wagner knows, that's the way to access that property.
Any other questions or discussions at this time?
Can I ask a question?
Just a moment. Thank you, Ms. Bradley. Is there anyone here, the applicant, or someone who wishes to speak on behalf of the applicant? Or here the applicant?
I mean, I was kind of, I'm Richard Wagner. I was kind of shocked when I got this because I had a contract on it, so I wanted to buy it, and they went down.
Excuse me one minute, can I get your name and address for the record, just so we'll have it?
Richard Wagner, fifty-two eighty-two, and Nelly Drive North, Lake Park.
Thank you. All right.
We had a contract on it for sale, and when they went down to the county, they said they couldn't build a house there or change trail. We do have a trail around the property now. And we got that permitted in two thousand and two, and no question of anything. We got the subject tank permitted, and electric brought down there. And then when we went to sell it, they said it wasn't legal, so that's what we're trying to do, is get access where it's a variance or a legal access off of this Mud Tussel Road, is what they named it now.
Okay, and your intent is to sell it, and the person that is buying it is a client here?
No, he canceled, but, you know, I just want to make sure it's proper to next time, next time the applicant.
Okay. Are you planning on doing any other improvements, or changing out the mobile home that exists?
No.
Or this is just simply to make it a legal access through a private road?
Yes, or where if someone wishes to put a new mobile home, or build a house there, they could.
Okay, and you do understand what Ms. Bradley said, so I can go about, if you try to go in there and do any kind of subdivision, or put any kind of house there, then you've still got to go through this process again to be able to do that?
No need to hurt to do that.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to add?
That's it, thank you, sir.
Is there anyone else here in support of this action? Is there anyone here in opposition or has any questions?
Not in opposition, but I just have a question.
That's fine, would you come to the lectern, please?
Yeah. My name is Wanda Grantley, twenty-eight seventy-eight, Mud Swamp Road. Actually, it's Swamp Edge, but when they changed it, it was confused, and we, because at first it was the Brandon Road address. Anyway, I have a question to ask you about this. This is Swamp Edge, right here, right? This right here?
That's my tussle.
This turns off, huh?
That's my tussle.
What? You're talking about over there by Derrills?
Yeah, that goes down to Derrills, the years.
Okay, so this goes down to Derrills. Okay, then it's not where I thought it was. I was thinking it was the Swamp Edge.
What you see is that first driveway.
The first driveway, okay. Then I have no question for that driveway.
Okay.
Okay, that answers my question, okay.
Carmella, can you lead us from Indian Ford Road down to Mud Swamp Road? Because I went out there, and after you turn off Indian Ford, there's not a road sign anywhere.
Yeah, yeah, well, I would have.
I'm reticent, I guess you're going up and down the road today.
There's not a sign, and there was not a, there was not a nail mark.
This intersection right here.
I got that.
Has all the nail marks.
And the sign was up there as opposed to on the designated property.
Is this intersection right here?
Right.
And then when you come down this road, this first drive?
And it deadens.
It deadens.
Into a swamp.
It's just a ten to flood sign, yes.
Okay, and there's a, there's a house on the left.
Yes.
Okay.
And then I tried to access it from this drive, and it, it's just.
It's not accessible?
You know, it just stops, and there's a gateway, you know, at this point here, this point here. But there is no way to get to it on this drive. I was only able to get to it from.
And from the subject drive there on the corner, there is a, an abandoned mobile home.
It's the one that's a manufactured home.
Any other questions or discussions? Is there anyone else here that has possible opposition or questions about what Mr. Wagner had to request? Was there any contact to your office, Carmella, about any of this?
There was another home concerning this request, but it was related to a property line dispute to the south. But yeah, there was an inquiry, but it was neither an opposition nor.
Okay. Any other discussions or questions from the board before we try to get an answer? Can I entertain a motion on this request?
I make a motion to approve siding deed.
Sir?
I say maybe I should speak up at this time. I'm the one to contact if your office, Mr. Miller. I'm Walton, T. Hinder, three-six-four-six, Long River.
Yes, sir.
But I have a letter to the PEG that I tried to contact Mr. Wagner. Of course, I know you all aren't in business, or is trying to straighten out property corners and land lines and all that. But his line, line comes about nine foot point three tenths inches over in the, me on the southwest corner.
Sir, that is something that this board cannot address.
Well, that's what I was told, and I just want you to be aware of it.
Well, I understand, but that's something that you would need to take up legally through attorneys and surveyors to try to determine where it is, but that, that does not have anything with us, and we have no power to adjust any of that.
I just want you to be aware of it, sir.
All right, sir? Can I get a motion on this request?
I make a motion to approve the request siding deed.
I have a motion from the foreman, second?
Sir?
I have seconds from Dr. Howes. All in favor, please raise a hand. Unanimous, good luck, sir. Hope it works out for you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, the next case we'll call is County Case VAR 2014-10 for BTL Investments, Alexandria Street and twenty-six oh seven Sims Street, Valdosta.
Yes, sir. Our last request before you today is a variance by BTL Investments. Basically, in a nutshell, this variance is known to most of us, airport subdivision being developed since the mid-fifties. But the former name is.
We can hear something, we can hear one. Sir, if you would come up front?
There's them talking back there.
But the former name is the Green and Henry subdivision. This applicant does have two lots, I believe, two lots may be under contract, or he may have already purchased the property. Both properties are vacant, and it's his desire to put two manufactured homes on both properties. The current zoning, R10 zoning, does allow for all housing types, be it site-built homes, manufactured homes. The R10 zoning restricts this area to double wides, and it's the applicant's desire to put a single wide on each lot. Staff, they looked at this and found that there is a mixture of housing types in this area, and the placement of a single wide wouldn't be out of scale with what's already going on in that neighborhood. And with that, staff's made a recommendation of approval with no conditions.
Any other questions, discussions from the board at this time? Thank you, Ms. Bradley. Okay, would you?
The minimum, the width of a single wide is what?
Some of them are fourteen by eighties, some are sixteen by eighties, but the smallest I've seen is fourteen, fourteen width.
And what is the minimum width of a double wide?
Twenty-one.
Any other questions?
And Mr. Chairman, one lot will be actually facing Henry, I mean Sims Street, and the other lot is going to be facing Alexandria Street.
And the creation of these, is it already existing two lots, or is it one he's going to?
It's already existing, two lots.
Two lots, okay.
Yes. He has to overcome some border health issues regarding his border sewer, because the placement of existing wells and drain fields is going to be challenging, but he has to overcome that before he can place a home there.
Right, and as far as the health department and wells and subject tanks, there is no variance. You have to be Lous County Board of Health regulations, or they will not issue, they won't issue a permit.
That's correct. That's correct.
And by saying that, it's possible, maybe if he cannot, or whoever the owner is, if they cannot get subject tank and well on each parcel, that they could then recombine it with one lot, and possibly put one unit, and give them more room to make subject tank and well.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions or discussions from the board at this time? Is the applicant here, or anybody representing the applicant, that would like to give us any additional information?
Rusty Johnson, two thousand and two, Jerry Jones Drive, Valdosta, Georgia. There's a couple of quick things I want to clear up, the access from Henry. Henry comes off Madison Highway where the old National Trap is usually located. Right now, there's a driveway here that has a house there, but we also, these were off, these were actually four lots, but we had this one combined due to the fact that it's aligned to the certain house. These two lots are already existing, they've been there since nineteen fifty-one, that's where Alde was applied. Alexandria here has occurred here, that we will be having to get a permit for a driveway to put it here. We'll also, this is the whole property subdivision, so what we will do is we'll take the fence of this property line, put a hole here across there, and that's how you can access it off the center. So when you go out there now, it looks like there's only one driveway, but when we get in there and start doing our side work, defensively, we will have another hole, another access here, but this access will not access this lot, this will have its own access off that one.
All right.
The area, I'm one of the first, and there's some opposition, and I think they're here today, but if you'll see, the area of the, this is the subject lots here. This is Madison, this is Henry Avenue coming from Madison Highway here. You have a single wide, and again, I own this house here, you have a single wide that is right next to the existing house we already own. You have an existing, a single wide here, this will be the property that the single wide is on. Now, this property, this single wide is here, so within this block here, you have one, two, three, four single wides already existing. You have others up here, five, six. Go down Alexandria all the way to the Henry, it's sort of separated, there's only seven houses down there. But in our, right in the immediate area, you have four single wides that are here. I brought a few pictures of those with me. If you'll see, this one is on the corner of, can you all see that? This, this mobile, this mobile over here is on the corner, right over here. Comes here, you have a house here, a single wide, you have a single wide here, a house here, double wide here, house here, and a big double wide, and a single wide. This single wide is right here. This single wide is here, in plain sight of the already existing lot. This one here is down here. Part of our, part of what we are asking for is on that table there, the land use table that goes with the property, and part of that states that mobile homes cannot have metal siding or vinyl skirting. Ninety-five percent of the mobile homes that I deal with have vinyl skirting. These guys, what this table states is that it states that it has to be brick or some other type of material. There's no way possible, I can buy a mobile home, move it in there, whether it be a double wide or single wide, you can put brick or anything over vinyl skirting. Vinyl skirting is manufactured for the mobile homes, that's what it's for. This table is saying you can't do that. Metal in mobile homes, I think it says reflected, maybe because it's in the airport area there, I'm not sure, but with a mobile home being metal, you're going to be looking somewhere in the early nineties, and there, it's the last time you'll ever see metal anyway. They do make them today for special, whereas cheaper vinyl is cheap, not metal on metal, which is metal siding and metal wood. So the likelihood of me getting a metal mobile home is not that likely, but if we weren't also one that's in good condition, that we can move there, we would like to have that option, to not be bound to just vinyl shingle with anything other than vinyl skirting. We will do vinyl skirting, that's the most cheap way of building a mobile home, they're all early county, and that's what it's manufactured for.
I have a quick question. Are you saying that it's impossible to put brick around?
It's not impossible, it's just not economical.
Okay, so, okay.
Yeah, it's possible.
Yes.
But, you know, the vinyl skirting I'm talking about.
Yes, I do.
It's manufactured for the mobile home. If you go and buy one from the factory, most of the time, that is what they will send to skirt the final.
What, do you know the cost differential?
I don't, but I can tell you, just off the top of my head, you're probably looking for four to five times as much for somebody coming late break around a mobile home. Your mobile home is usually twenty-four to thirty-six inches off of the ground. So to go up at a sixteen or fourteen or sixteen by eighty brick, it's a lot of bricks to lay. They have to pour a footer around it, and then set the bricks on the footer, so it's expensive to do that. Can't put wood down there, so you have turnouts. You can't take wood to ground, so you have turnouts. Vinyl is a plastic made for that, for that reason, that's why it's made. I don't remember the others on the table, but one was a five-inch overhang on mobile homes. Single wides don't have five-inch overhang, and they're very limited on a double wide unless you're buying them straight from the back there and have them custom made. So you're not going to have five-inch overhang around a mobile home that I, the only host of all thirty property convictions from houses and mobile homes. Understand that, that part of the worry is that the clientele out there is going to become worse if we put a single wide. I want to make it clear that we have the ability to put a mobile home there in its terms only. I haven't had a Shannon out there, we've gone through subject systems, there is, there is a way to get to subject system, they will do mountain systems. They have been purged, but do not have permits, but they have been purged. So I've been all the way through the process, but we got to the fact of moving a single wide in there, a double wide just happens up. It is double the cost, all the way across the board. A three-bedroom single wide, a three-bedroom double wide, there's not a lot of difference. It's still a three-bedroom, two-bath, majority of the time, the double wide's shorter, and you have similar to the surface, as you have. So, just wanted to make that clear. I want to ask if you guys have any other questions?
Any questions, Carmella? All the design standards that are in there.
Yes, sir.
If I'm reading it right, why not use a subject door? Wood basement concrete structure, nice nice vinyl lap, a low material light appearance, so he can use vinyl or skirting.
He would need a variance to use vinyl, but the vinyl skirting is not allowed in R10, something. You also mentioned, uh, brick presented a problem in terms of the cost, what about concrete?
The same, you're dealing with the same type of material. You're, you're going to be, it's going to be really expensive.
A criminal wide, vinyl double wide?
What the county tried to do when they adopted brick, they tried, unlike, predated zoning orders, we restricted manufactured homes in a certain zoning order. And our advisor, you know, advisor, we couldn't do that, that was unconstitutional, but we can put design standards on homes in various zoning districts, such as Yidd, Uppet, so on and so forth. But they do make, I know manufacturers do make a type of skirting, it's, it looks like a fake brick or concrete. It is manufactured.
Is it called vinyl lap? What is, I don't know what vinyl lap, what is that?
A concert.
Yes, yes.
Can I see that?
They make this, this like a skirting that.
This is, this is actually a vinyl, too.
Okay, so vinyl skirting is not allowed, so?
Oh, they're all over, all of these have it all the way around, there's not allowing that.
They may predate the current regs, which means they are grandfathered in because they were there, but from this, from the point of the new regs on.
That's right.
Then these are the things that county says you've got to accomplish.
That's right, that's true. And that's why we're here today.
If they are an economic detriment, then that theoretically is not something this board addresses, that's something you would address. If it was not economical, then you do something else.
Do you have any pictures of the other type of skirting, brick?
I don't have.
Was there out there, you only took pictures of one?
Well, I don't, I don't see any brick out there, and there's not any. And I, like I said, I've been in this business now for twelve years, and we own plus thirty properties. We probably own twelve mobile homes, and not one of them has anything other than vinyl skirting.
But right now, Mr. Johnson, we're talking about a specific subdivision. We're not talking about where your buildings might be located. They might be in a mobile home park.
They could be.
But we're talking about a neighborhood, and one of the, I know that your pictures were specifically there to show single wides in the neighborhood, but it was obvious that it was an omission of the nice homes. There's a home right next door to where you're going to put this house on Sims Street, that's probably one of the nicest homes in that area, and all the way back up Henry. There are nice, older homes, but they're nice and neat and well-kept. So I think that we need to concentrate on some of the homes that we're looking at in this area.
And, and that's.
And if they're new, or if they have been grandfathered in, that's a major point right there.
That's right, and I understand that. You know, the area is, in my opinion, I kind of disagree, it's not that nice of an area, it's okay, you can ride around the corner, and there's actually homes falling down right now.
There are, but are we going to contribute to an existing problem, or are those going to be eventually phased out and put nicely things in as we go along?
And I want to be clear, I can put a double wide there.
I know, by right.
So I can go by.
I know, by right, you can put a double wide.
I can go by, in nineteen seventy-five, most double wide looks terrible, that's not the business one, that's why I mentioned the third one. You know, if we pull, if you pull ours up, everything we have is nice, to keep it up, our enters paid worth six hundred and above. So we're not in the business to, to put shabby properties there. Our, our intent is to not have to put a double wide, we'll put a single wide, is our intent. Whether it be vinyl, metal, you know, there's metal double wide, there's, there's nice nice appliances, there's vinyl double wide. Our intent here, what we're voting on is, is whether or not a single, we're asking for a manure to put a single wide there instead of a double wide.
I'm very wary of that, sir.
Any other questions, discussions from the board at this time? Is there anyone else here in support of this application? Okay, did you have anything you'd like to add, or are you satisfied with what's been presented?
I'm a partner in the Russi, I also own a store holding company.
Can I get your name and all of your name and address?
Eight zero nine nine, Lake Circle, Lake Park. And we don't want to bring the neighborhood down, I have multiple properties in that neighborhood, we don't want to bring the neighborhood down, we want, we want to keep the neighborhood the same or better, and we have no intention of, of, I have nineteen properties myself, they're all nice, nothing is shabby, I stay on top of people, and we don't want to have one shabby place. I stay on top of people and we don't want to have them in shabby places, so. We're going to keep the neighborhood nice, so we put a double wide there, a single wide there. It's going to be taken care of. It's going to be maintained properly.
All right. Is anyone here in opposition to this request? Will you come to the lectern, give me your name and address for the record?
My name is John Cooper. My wife owns the property that she was talking about, the house there. We built the house in nineteen seventy-two. Taxes is terribly high. We've been paying them and never grumbled about them. Sit sound according to me looking at computers for twenty-two years. I don't want this over there. I think that this picture here was not represented, that we really is not represented.
And your objection is, don't put them there.
This right here is probably a hundred, both of them are probably a hundred by two hundred. This is a very wet area. If you look where the sign is here, it shows this is a lake. And if you look at this ditch right near the county owned, they never heated up, very sealed. This is a swamp home. We who live out there have shallow waves, we'll put some things down. This place right near it, I don't know if you're on it. It's, 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 looks like the same sign as it, I don't know if you're on this part, but. This curve, you know, it's going to be there. I talked with the commissioner about it in our area and he was going to get it straightened out. It's been over a year ago. I think he did a sign that. They need to straighten it out and make a stop sign there indeed. And so we put on that, that location up there on Sims Street, I think. My property is, this is a lot of, um, this, we own a home in, in Florida City that I'm waiting to lay there. Just talking about the home that we don't, and it's been there for all these years. We're old. We don't want to be, came in with noise, swamp, bad water. Uh, we don't have the expense to go in and dig, dig a deep well. When you dig a deep well there, you're likely to get suffer water. These houses over here is the same way. Yes, sir. I had a guy to tell me that he could pick water out of here. He said, now, he could tell me he could pick water out of his well with a, a bucket. Why should we have to suffer that? I've all these years paid these high taxes and have somebody to come in and put, how big is that law? Did you tell you?
Sir, I'm not going to cut you short, but we understand your situation. Problem is, if, if it is a lot of records, which it is, if it is large enough to be a lot of records and they can put physically and with Health Department regulations a double wide on it with septic tank and well according to Louts County Health Department, they can do that by right. We're not even talking about that.
Yes, well, I, we are, we live there.
I, I understand.
And this is the whole, the board should listen to our problem. Just as, just like the law, and just as truly as they listen to the other guys' problem. Now, that depends on them.
But the problem is, this whole thing goes away if he says, I will put a double wide in there.
Okay, then. What about these houses that live just right here? We have a name in here, we have a building there. If those houses were checked, they're sitting right down in a swamp, about that high of the dirt.
That's not something this board can handle.
And, and they, and the board should, for us, the people lives in that community, the board should look at our problem with help. That helps the problem open. Their decision is going to be what's going to happen.
Yes, sir. And what I'm, what I'm trying to make clear is, he can stop right now and put a double wide on both lots legally without anybody's permission, without anything going on.
And it went right.
And he can, if, if the Louts County Health Department says that well, I mean, that the septic tank will perk and then he's got enough land to put a septic tank in the well within the regulations, it can't be within so many feet of a property line. It cannot be within so many feet of a well, if they can put a double wide in there.
But let's, let's go for.
If.
What he really said was, he talked about his expense.
He is, he is asking to put a single wide in there instead of a double one.
That's, I know what he's asking. I, I shouldn't have missed it.
That is, that is the variance he's asking for. If we deny that variance as a vote, he can still put a double wide in there as long as the Health Department gives him clearance for a well septic tank.
Or the Health Department go in there and inspect the whole situation?
That's the Health Department, that is not us.
We need to go to the health department.
If you have a problem, the Health Department is the one, is going to be the one to say, yes, you can put a well in, yes, you can put a septic tank, or no, you can't.
We'll go to the health department.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm not trying to cut you off, but you're asking us to do something that's not within our.
I understand that, but I'd like to get my side of the story in. I have, I, I've got a place that has a board. I've got a place, like, in Florida, and we have a board. And I know what the board can do and what they can't do. Thanks.
Yes, sir. Is there anyone else in opposition that would like to give us any other additional information? Was there any contact to your office, Carmella?
There was a number of calls in opposition, um, to this request.
Of nothing in writing, no letters that we could substantiate until the end of the minute?
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion, any other questions from the board before we try to decide on this variance request?